Thank you for joining us for this Joint Committee on Public Safety, Intergovernmental and Military Affairs, and our good friends from the Committee on Water and Land. It's 3 o'clock on this Wednesday, February 7th, in room 225. We have a number of bills on this agenda. I'm sorry, before I get to that, I have to take care of a couple of Housekeeping announcements that we're streaming this hearing live on YouTube. If we have any kind of catastrophic failure, we will make notice of when we will reconvene, but it hasn't happened yet, so we will soldier on. I want to make clear that we are going to limit our testimony for testifiers to two minutes, and we're going to be strict about that, to be fair to everyone in this room. And with that, we are going to take one bill out of order. So Senate Bill 3327 relating to the Commission on Water Resource Management, we're going to take up first, because I understand that there are a number of individuals who have flown in here to convey their thoughts on this measure. We'd like to get them back to Maui, I believe, is where many of them are coming from, as quickly as possible. So with your indulgence, I apologize, we're going to take that one bill out of order. So on Senate Bill 23... Oh, actually, this is a water-land lead, so I will let Chair Inouye take over.
Thank you, Chair Wakai, and I appreciate the indulgence of the committee to allow SB 3327 to be on the agenda at the outset, and understanding that you're so kind as well, recognizing that we do have members testifying today from the island of Maui and perhaps other islands as well. And so we'll proceed then with SB 3327. And this is relating to the Commission on Water Resource Management, and this establishes the public trust purpose for the Commission on Water Resource Management. It authorizes the Commission on Water Resource Management to declare an emergency under certain conditions. It repeals the first deputy to the chairperson of the Commission on Water Resource Management, and it establishes the executive director of the Commission of Water Resource Management. It will be administratively attached to the Commission on Water Resource Management to the Department of Land and Natural Resources. It authorizes membership of the Commission on Water Resource Management to be eligible to serve as the chairperson as well. Chair, would like to, before we go on to this hearing, I do want to say, in my dealing with water issues for the many, many years of my four decades of public service, I was the former chair of the Hawaii County Planning Commission. I remember discussions regarding the need for an independent state resource agency. And the origin of this bill came from the reports that I had my staff look for from the State Water Commission to Governor Arioshie in 1979, and a review of the state water code. And this is what we pulled up of something that occurred back then. And it highlighted the importance of a water commission that remains independent. The discussions at the time in 1979 and the reports stemmed from the need to take politics out of the water policy and protect our vai. Our vai is the public trust resource, should be treated as such. Seaworm needs to be independent, especially given the recent state emergencies, Red Hill, and droughts that have affected our water supply. The 1979 report recommended that an independent water agency remain independent of any existing agency, its operating budget be submitted to the legislature through the governor independent of any existing agency, a permanent staff be provided to accomplish regulatory functions headed by an executive officer with a technical competence in water resources who is appointed by the Water Commission. Hola ika vai, water is life. First off, Chair Don Chang, DLNR. Aloha.
Aloha. Don Chang, Chair of the Board of Land and Natural Resources. Good afternoon, Senators Inouye, Wakai, Chairs of the Joint Committees and members of the committee. I know that you have a lot of people who are here to testify. We have submitted our testimony. Out of respect to those who have come, I'm going to stand on my written testimony, and I will be available, as will my staff, to answer any questions after that.
Appreciate that, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Mahalo. Okay, those from Maui need to help me, because I have many, many testifiers. And so what I'd like to do was raise your hand and just give me your name, because I believe that those who are here had sent in the testimony. So whoever wants to come first from Maui, please. Okay, is that okay with you, Chair? Thanks, thank you. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Are they coming in or?
They want to come in.
Okay.
They keep the doors open. Okay, they can sing from outside, but we can't bring them in.
Okay, you've heard that, yeah, because we do have safety controls with regards to attendance. No, that's okay. That's fine. Oh, that's up to you guys. Okay. Park, I understand some of our guests here are relinquishing their chairs, so they can, I can sit down then. And I just want to add, hopefully, I understand the oi, but if you can kind of minimize it, because we're time-sensitive here as well. Okay. Okay, proceed, please. Mahalo. Okay, for the Maui delegation, please, we are allowing one minute of the testimony, and we know some are quite long, but we're time-sensitive here as well, because we are all on Zoom, and we have a limited time for this hearing to include the entire agenda. Okay, so you need to help me, who's here? And if you want, we can start with Lahaina Strong. Mahalo. State your name, and we will be on Zoom. We'll have notification when your time is up. And mahalo, welcome.
Mahalo. Aloha Chairs and Vice Chairs. My name is Paleke Kiyokona. I am here on behalf of Lahaina Strong. First one is mahalo you Senator Inouye for introducing this bill and doing your due diligence and looking after our public trust resources. Looking at the entire scope of the Aina here in Hawaii, the DLNR was created to protect exactly that. We see too often that the political factor influences the outcome of our Aina. People who do not quite understand our Aina and the environmental implications of our Aina. So now I stand here in full support of Bill 3327, because it lets our water commission, which handles the lifeline of our Aina, which is our vai, to answer to the community and the Aina rather than the political entities that may have ulterior motives that do not align with ours. In the wake of the devastating fires, and being a resident born and raised in Lahaina, we witnessed firsthand the consequences of political interference in the management of our vai. The removal of key figures willing to prioritize our public trust resources over the political agendas has highlighted the fragile nature of our current system, where too often, where too much power rests in the balance, the hands of two few.
Your time is up.
I send a supportive bill 3327.
Mahalo. Okay, can you help me? Is Sesamishim is with your group?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, okay, whoever.
Aloha.
Aloha. Aloha, inapaua, mena la la, okaha olalo. My name is Mahma Elipio. I am from Lahaina, and I attend Ke'kula Kae Puni O Kekaulike. Mahalo for allowing me to testify on this important matter regarding the water, the Commission on Water Resource Management that would benefit Maui's water resource and especially Maui komuhana. I stand on my written testimony, but just want to highlight one point for you today. In the wake of the fires on August 8th, the hands of greed saw this disaster as an opportunity to gain power over our freshwater resources in Maui komuhana. Governor Josh Green suspended the water code, which led to private water purveyors hoarding more water than they were legally allowed in online reservoirs in the name of fire suppression or kanaka, who left this place. When the plantation era came along 130 years ago, our most precious resource started to be abused for corporate greed. When the plantation era ended, it was replaced by greedy businessmen who profit off of our Aina and off of our vai. We need to end the political corruption that helps lines pockets instead of protecting our Aina and our people.
Your time is up.
Okay. I strongly support Bill SB 3327. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Okay. Aloha.
Aloha, I am Eki Aloha. My name is Belaku Elani. I am from Iluku and Hana on Maui, and attend Ke'Kaulike High School. Mahalo for allowing me to testify on this important matter regarding the Commission on Water Resource Management that would benefit Maui's waters resources and especially Maui komuhana. I stand on my written testimony, but just want to highlight one point for you today. Henuku hevi kaia kalao. The Kumilipo, the genealogical chant of a vai's birth, explains, "Water is the element that gives life to all things. Water is life." The protection and rightful usage of a vai's water is at all costs important for our survival. This entangling seaworm and BLNR creates true independence among these two organizations. This can result in better protection and management of water. Kanaka would be at ease rather than worrying about influencers who make decisions on our vai. Having an executive director can benefit the people and the public by ensuring that their mana'au is being heard. I believe that the community's mana'au is most important, especially for those whose families have been on this Aina for generations.
Okay, you can close.
Mahalo me for this opportunity to testify. Hola ika vai.
Aloha. Kailani pa'au. Aloha.
Aloha, inapaua okaha. Napaua, me kanala, la la, okaha olalo. My name is Kailani pa'au. I am from Makaua, and attend Ke'Kula Kae Puni O Kekaulike. Mahalo for allowing me to testify on this important matter regarding to the Water Commission. I just wanted to highlight one point for you today. 130 years ago, our Aina's precious resources were stripped away from us little by little until we had little to no recess and no regulations over our waters and how we use it. On August 8th, 2023, when the tragedy of Lahaina's fires started, Governor Josh Green suspended the water code, and that later led to private water usage in luxury housing developments rather than for our Aina. Our freshwater springs and rivers are stewed by the Kanaka Hawaii, yet are used to make greedy people who call this place paradise rich and do not even malamata's Aina like we do. We need vai to restore life on our Aina, especially in Lahaina after the tragedy it has faced. Private purveyors have long been taking our vai without bounds of restrictions.
You can close.
Mahalo Nui Chair Inouye, and mahalo for the time.
Thank you for taking time to be here. Aloha.
Aloha, Maika Ko. My name is Kalima Le Garcia. I'm from Kahului, and I attend Ke'Kula Kae Puni O Kekaulike. Thank you for allowing me to testify today on this important matter. I stand on my written testimony, but want to highlight one point for you today. Water makes up our whole existence. Everybody knows this. With no water, there is no life. So why is there so much politics involved in something that is a basic living necessity for all humans? Water shouldn't be a luxury item. We shouldn't have to fight for something that is a primary right to all. Everybody has a right to water, but there's a line where need becomes want, and these purveyors are constantly crossing the line of taking too much water. Streams are still being drained, our lo'i are dry, and our people are exhausted. But SB 3327 can be the start of a much-needed change for Kanaka Hawaii and all people in Hawaii. It's going to make Kanaka the priority once again. I want to give a huge mahalo to Chair Inouye for introducing this bill, which would improve the Water Commission's ability to better manage our vai. Mahalo for your time and for the opportunity to testify today. Hola ika vai.
Hola ika vai. Mahalo. Aloha.
Aloha, Maika Ko. My name is Komaknovell Ke'Kaua Schultz. I am from Wa'e'u Maui, and attend Ke'Kula Kae Puni O Kekaulike. Mahalo for allowing me to testify today. I stand on my written testimony, but just want to highlight one point for you. That point is the importance of the public trust having the priority of vi access. Having our traditional and customary practices, the expression of our identity and way of life must be upheld as a priority in access to vai. As a young Mahi'a farmer myself, I am asking for your support, because access to vai is vital for me to continue learning and growing in this way, and to cultivate a bountiful land for future generations. The health of our people is dependent on the health of our Aina. Proper management of our resources will ensure our wellness. Vai is the most valuable resource to sustain life. Water must go to the lo'i before it goes to the pools of the hotels or the grass of the golf courses. If you care about Hawaiians and Hawaii as a whole, if you care to see us keiki and future generations flourish in our identity as Hawaiians, if you care about fixing this corrupt system that we currently struggle with and have been struggling with since the establishment of the sugar plantations, then please pass this bill. While we need to Chair Inouye for introducing this bill, which would help improve the Water Commission's ability to better manage our vai, mahalo for your time and opportunity to testify today. Hola ika vai.
Aloha.
Aloha, my name is Kapua Louis Matos. I am from Naua'e'a. I'm also from Ma'luu Anui. I attend Ke'Kula Kae Puni O Kekaulike. I'm 17 years old. Aside from being a student at Kekaulike, I'm also a student of Lo'i Kalo. My family has been Kalo farmers and water advocates for Kahu vai for generations, and I share today on behalf of myself, my ohana, my community, and my lahui. The motto of seaworm is Ke'Kau vai pono. Kahu meaning caretaker, guardian, vai meaning water, and pono fair, prosperous. To be a Kahu vai is to commit to protect. To be a Kahu vai is kuleana. For too long, this system of a vai has not shown beneficial and hopeful outcomes to the future generations. However, a positive change like this can provide a better opportunity and kela'au me as well as all the youth of Hawaii to have a future in the right direction. I support Bill 3 SB 3327. Having a distinct leadership for Water Commission ensures that decisions are made with a diverse range of perspectives and prevents concentration of power. This helps avoid potential biases. It also allows things to be put back into checking balances and focuses on fairness and allows and provides people with what we need. Lastly, this bill helps seaworm gain public trust and accountability. By making pono changes, the agency can gain the trust of the people. Ho'omoi vai kahi ke'Kau. Let us all travel like water flowing in one direction.
Mahalo.
Mahalo for your time.
Okay. Aloha.
Aloha, Iwakou. Obau Sesmi. I'm from Kulani Maui, and I'm here to just, I stand on my written testimony, but to share this one point. Power. People around the world have fought for power since time immemorial and continue to do so today. And there are always simply two sides to the struggle, fighting for the power to feed and/or fighting for the power of greed. We have the kanaka of this Aina. As the kanaka of this Aina, the kanaka will have clearly defined benefits under our public trust. Feed not just through food, ipono, but through our ike, our knowledge, our perspectives, our values, our identity, our aloha. It is everything that is encapsulated in the entire mana'au of Hanai. The same reasons why you have taken on this rich kuleana as senators for the people of Hawaii, to help Hanai the next generation. The hihiya or entanglement of capitalism in our politics is inherent by the true nature of capitalism. And plantation disaster capitalism has so very shamefully exposed itself in our politics following the unnatural disaster of August 8th in Lahaina. We have reached a breaking point. We are no longer accepting or being complicit in corruption, and we ask you to do the same. We are all aware that there is no future for us in this current power structure, and so we ask you to change that system, allowing seaworm the full oversight to make decisions.
Your time is up.
Mahalo Nui. Yeah, the only people who should have power over our vai is the people who know vai. Mahalo Nui. I support SB 3327.
Aloha. Anyone else with your group that came from Maui?
Mahalo, Senator Inouye.
Aloha.
I'm a supporter of this bill. Here, my ofai, Honui Lani, Ke'avi Aiko, resident of Lahaina. I come today to ask that you pass this bill. I'm not only have been affected by the fires, and I, five households altogether, my children, myself, I have, I'm raising three generations in Lahaina. I've been there for 26 years, originally from here, and vai is very important. If we had our vai, if our keiki were in our fields of lo'i, in the streams, to play in that water that is so precious, this wouldn't have happened. So I just ask that you pass this bill.
Mahalo. Mahalo. Okay. Anyone else here from Maui or other islands? Aloha. Can you pass the word outside as well, if you know of anyone? Aloha.
Aloha Chair. I'll take you to hear this bill.
Your name.
Ke'Kai Ke'ri. I am for this bill. We, we, we need to give this commission some independence away from the long reach of the governor's office. At any time, when a new governor come in, he can change the landscape of how we're going to decide what happens with the water, with the commission. We need more consistency, so we need our, our commission to be independent of the long reach of the governor's office. And so, whatever, I support this bill.
Aloha. Safe travels. Thank you. Anyone else here?
Aloha. Aloha. My name is Katie Austin. Mahalo Senator Inouye for introducing this bill. This is definitely a bill that is going to directly impact Lahaina in an absolute positive way. We also think that it'll definitely help if we bump up the fines, because the fines, 5,000, is not going to be enough. It's not enough for Peter Martin, and so this bill will have amazing repercussions for that as well. I just want to thank you, and I think that it's going to be something that's going to be a positive impact, impact for Lahaina and the whole state as well. Yeah.
Mahalo. Mahalo. Aloha.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair Members of the Committee, Annie Frederick. On behalf of the Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action, we're just here to stand on our testimony and support. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the neighbor islands or from Maui that needs to catch a flight? Okay. Outside. Okay, I guess they can hear me. The TV is going on. Okay, all right. We'll proceed with the testimonies then for SB 3327. We did hear from the Chair of DLNR. We'd like to call in the Attorney General. I have Miranda Steed, but it is changed today?
No, that's correct. Good afternoon Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. My name is, my name is Miranda Steed. I'm a Deputy Attorney General, and I'm here on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General this afternoon. The Attorney General has serious concerns with this bill. Although it appreciates the purpose of the bill, there are some issues that we'd like to point out. First and foremost, in defining public trust, the bill has actually deviated from the constitutional definition, and we're concerned that adopting this definition would actually be unconstitutional. Additionally, we have serious concerns about having outside counsel represent the commission. Normally, the Attorney General does represent most state agencies. Attorney General is able to do this without conflict normally. This has been upheld at Supreme Court. And providing outside counsel would be both costly to taxpayers as well as have a concern about the ability of outside counsel to provide good representation. We had a few other things we outlined in our testimony, but otherwise, I'll be here for questions. Thank you.
Just for your information as well, and normally, we wait until we make decisions. But with regards to that particular area recognized about hiring of the attorney, having the option to hire an attorney, that will be, I will be making an amendment to that as well. But it will include this though as one of those who has an opportunity going forward to be able to hire their counsel as time needed. Yeah, because there's a whole section of some of the agencies that's already entitled to hire at times of need.
Yes, I understand, and I'd be happy to discuss that further in questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go on to the County of Hawaii. Department of Water Supply sends communication with comments on the County of Kauai. Department of Water Supply also sends communication with comments. Board of Water Supply, our friend, Ernie Lau. Aloha. Thanks for taking time.
Aloha. I have sent in my written comments, and I won't go over them. I just stand on those, some concerns and suggestions to how to improve the bill.
There is. Appreciate that.
There's one area that is not covered in my testimony, though, that I'd like to speak to. This concept of reducing political influence in water, I think, is critical, because, like you said, Senator and members, hola ika vai, and Red Hill has kind of reinforced the importance of hola ika vai, putting water is life for all the people of Hawaii. For the Board of Water Supply, back in 1929, it was actually in the 1920s, the territorial legislature also saw the problems with political influence over decisions related to water, which is vital for life. So the Board of Water Supply was created, actually, in a very similar model of what you are proposing under your bill. So the idea is to have the commission, like our water board, actually hire, for my case, the manager, and I serve at the pleasure of the board. Same thing, the commission hires its own executive director, serving at the pleasure of the, of the commission. I think that would help to de-politicize even the perception of political influence in water, because water is life. And I support, although it's not in my written testimony, that whole concept being applied to the Water Commission, like it is to the Honolulu Board of Water Supply and the three counties of the state of Hawaii, Kauai, Hawaii Island. Only Maui has deviated where it's under the mayor and a department under the mayor. But I firmly believe in the model of independence on water decisions that are vital for life for our community. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Ernie. Thank you for all you did as well in your role, particularly Red Hill. Mahia Lani Zepper. Okay, I saw her. She must be outside. We will get her as well. HGEA, Randy Ferrero sends communication in support. Annie Frederick? Oh, yeah, you're, that's right. Sorry about that. Counsel for Native Hawaiian. Sorry about that. Um, Counsel for Native Hawaiian, uh, advancement. And I understand Madeline McKeek, uh, they're sense communication in support. Is Hokoa here? Hokoa Pellegrino? From Maui. Oh, you're raising your hand, but, um, are you from Maui? Come on up, come on up. Yes, aloha. And I'm sure Hokoa would have been here, but.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Aloha Chair, Inoue, um, members. Uh, my name is Bobby Poria, I'm from Maui. I'm a kalo farmer. Uh, I know the importance of water. Um, I support Bill three, three, two, seven. And, uh, the reason for that, uh, to gain public trust in our communities. We need to have greater transparency. And I think this model that, uh, is being proposed will bring that transparency and, uh, create, uh, more trust from our community in government and how they govern the water. Thank you.
Aloha, safe travels.
Thank you.
Well, I did earlier call Hokoa Pellegrino, and he's a kalo grower as well, that we know very well, and he supports, um, this measure. Okay, uh, Pane Ma'itua Mea Toga, the third, uh, representing operating engineers, Oahu. And they sent testimony, uh, in support as well. Wayne Tanaka, Sierra Club.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee, Wayne Tanaka, Circle of the Ho'ia, in strong support of this measure. Um, you know, we're talking about freeing the commission from potential political influence and bias, um, from the governor's cabinet, right? The DLNR Chair, the Attorney General, and I just thought I'd share a really quick example of why that's so important. So in the wake of the wildfires, maybe there was a filing by the Attorney General saying that Maui is in peril, it's being ravaged, there's not enough water to fight fires because of the cap, environmental court judge imposed on, uh, their diversions based on their historical uses. Um, they, you know, everyone's, okay, take the water, the judge is like, okay, okay. Turns out that was completely false. They, they, they had two million gallons of water available every single day throughout that, that time period. Over the course of five days, they've only used thirty-three thousand gallons of water from, from reservoirs. They had more than enough water, millions of gallons, orders of magnitude more. Um, they never recant, recanted that, and in fact, they then tried to tie the environmental court judge's hands and say that he can't impose a cap, um, which yeah, okay, and so to stem the rampant waste of water, and, and so that's just, I think, one smoking gun example of why political installation is so important for the Water Commission.
I'm glad you're here to support our bill. He came in my committee earlier, and oh boy, I didn't get your support for three bills. But I'm happy you're supporting this. Aloha. Mahalo. Dr. Jonathan, uh, Schor.
Aloha. My co-senators, my name is Jonathan Lekeke Shoyer, and I'm here as an individual. I was born and raised on Oahu. I wrote my PhD dissertation about how the Waihuli water case was treated by this commission and the Supreme Court and wrote a book about water in West Maui. There's every part of this bill that I like. If I, since I only have a few seconds, I want to emphasize to you two things. One is, we already have more land entitled across the state than we have groundwater to provide for it. So the timing of needing better management of water is clear. Secondly, if the Attorney General is going to defend their record, they're going to have to defend the fact that since the code was passed in nineteen eighty-seven, nine decisions have been appealed, they've lost seven times. And so the possibility of having outside counsel is well advised. Mahalenui, I'd be very happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate your testimony and your presence. Mahalo. Okay, um, I do have some of the, and it could be the Maui group, but if you're here. Um, Sesame Shim sends communication in support, uh, Kupuna for the Mo'opuna. Okay, sends communication in support as well. Ahakui o Hawaii.
Aloha Chairs.
Aloha.
My name's Kabai Scanlon, I'm from Palolo Oahu, and I'm a third-year law student at Richardson.
You know, I think we need to move the
Sorry.
Moving forward. Yes, thank you so much to the other speakers as well.
Um, I just want to say that we stand on our testimony and thank you so much for introducing this bill. It's really important. And, um, the other, Alaka'i and I from Oahu, we are here if you have any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Aloha. Native Hawaiian Legal Corp. We have Ashley Aubrey and sends communication in support. Protect Kaholavi Ohana. Sends communication in support. Cavika Spili. Okay, uh, Dr. Joseph Kohn. Katie Austin. Sam Peck. Victoria Takamini. Candice Fujikane. Tara Rojas. Kyle Kajihiro. These are all in support. Cheryl Burkett. Michael Bach sends communication, uh, comments. These, uh, Charles Ice in opposition. We have I would say at this point, about two hundred, um, support communications. But those who are present, if you did send communications, come on up, say, state, state your name.
I'm Candice Fujikane.
Uh, Manoa Campus, retired. No?
Oh, oh, Manoa Campus, yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
I'm happy that you remember. Yeah, I'm an English professor at the University of Hawaii. My name is Candice Fujikane. And I strongly support, I'm Senate Bill thirty-three, twenty-seven. Um, in nineteen ninety-four, in the review, there was a recommendation that the Seaworm needed autonomy. And, uh, I was one of the hundreds of people who gave testimony, um, for twelve hours from nine AM to nine PM at the September nineteen, twenty-twenty-three Seaworm meeting, um, demanding the reinstatement of Deputy Director Kaleo Manuel. And because of a wrong, uh, that DLNR had committed, it, the burden of correcting it fell to the public, to the people, and it's a tremendous burden for people to travel from Maui, to come here to testify. I, I've never actually been to a, a hearing where there was a twelve-hour testimony, and that kind of, um, I think that's the problem of, uh, uh, DLNR having oversight over Seaworm. Seaworm needs that autonomy. And, um, uh, Seaworm cannot be hindered or influenced by this kind of politicking, but thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for being here as well. Thank you. Anyone sitting here is, um, here to speak on SB thirty-three, twenty-seven, please come forward.
Aloha Chairs, Vice Chair Isaac Moriwaki, Ur Justice, uh, standing in support of this bill. I just want to respond to one comment that the AG's representative made, which is that the AG's office is adequately representing the, the Water Commission. Uh, so setting, uh, aside the point that Dr. Shoyer made about, well, the track record, look at the track record. I, I do want to point out that in the two most dire times of need of the Water Commission, uh, in the Waihuli case, and then just last year when Deputy Manuel was sidelined, the AGs were either MIA, or they were actually actively working against the Water Commission. Um, and so, you know, when the AG said that they can represent the Water Commission, um, you know, they haven't been there when the Water Commission's needed them most. So this is all about independence and free from political interference, and that's why it, it's clear that the Water Commission needs its own independent counsel, just like other agencies such as the Public Utilities Commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And members, if you have questions of those testifying, please ask your questions at that time. Okay, all right. Anyone sitting here, uh, are you here for SB thirty-three, twenty-seven? Any, oh yes, please, aloha.
Aloha, thank you.
And state your name for the record, please.
Aloha Chair, Members of the Committee, thank you for having me here today. Uh, my name is Sam Peck. I'm here to testify in support of this measure. Um, I believe that this measure is a way to start giving back autonomy that was taken away, uh, to Hawaii and the Hawaiian people. Um, I think it's this state's duty to push as much as it can for the revitalization of Hawaiian sovereignty, Hawaiian control over Hawaiian lands, waters, and resources, and everything that that entails. Uh, I think that that's the only way forward through this climate crisis, housing crisis, healthcare crisis, and any number of severe challenges that we're all trying to face together right now. And I think that giving Seaworm independence, uh, from these political processes that everyone's been discussing is a strong step in the right direction. So thank you so much, Chair, for introducing this measure. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Anyone else sitting here to speak on SB thirty-three, twenty-seven? Any out, any of those on the outside lanai, uh, if you want to come in, um, please, uh, come forward. Okay, all right, okay. My understanding, uh, there is, uh, there are several waiting on Zoom. IT will use forward to the committee. We're in room two, two, five, I believe.
Yes, uh, we have three available on Zoom Chair.
Thank you. Aloha, whoever wants to come on first. Aloha.
Aloha Nikako, uh, my name is Kanoi Lani Stewart, and I'm from Lahaina. Mahalenui for the opportunity to testify in strong support of SB three, three, two, seven. Uh, alongside various community groups, I have appeared before the Water Commission to restore water to aina and streams for the past few years. While we are grateful for the progress we have made over the years in partnership with the Water Commission, it has also been discouraging to witness private companies' flagrant disregard of the commission's orders. In addition to restoring our traditional and customary practices, we are also faced with having to monitor and ensure compliance. This bill would be a step in the right direction and hold these companies accountable through increased fines and penalties. SB three, three, two, seven would also prioritize public trust purposes in a meaningful way and separate the Water Commission from politics, as, as we have all heard. In the wake of the fires, our community spent so much time and energy asking for transparency and for the commission to uphold pono. We watched them battle one another and unnamed forces. In a time when we should have been focusing on our families and town, it was exhausting. And there's no guarantee that it won't happen again. Uh, the commission needs to be able to do its job independently of any political chaos or powers that arise. Uh,
Kanoi Lani, your, your time is up.
Uh, please pass SB three, three, two, seven today.
Mahalo. Okay, Holden Takahashi.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Um, I'm here, Mahalo, for the introduction of this bill and for opportunity to testify here today. I'm in support of SB three, three, twenty-seven, um, which gives Seaworm independence. It, it desperately needs to operate objectively. I'm also in support of these, this genre of bills that decentralize power access and domain over our resources from the government and the state with intent to oper, operationalize justice to return power to our communities and our people. Um. From here forward, the states should divest our trust in part from the governor and look to the people, how best to govern their place and malama, and malama their resources. Um, the government did a serious disservice to the people in suspension of the water code during a climate disaster and shows a blatant disregard for the protections, particularly the code that embodied the term kahu vay pono. As Lekeke shared, the lands are overpromised. There's simply not enough vay. I suggest to relieve it to those who make those promises to sell pieces of a myth of paradise to let the po, these politicians, developers, and realtors and American transients, that there is simply no room for their extractive ideologies and imperialist violence that continues to displace our Ohana, even in a disaster which resulted in a loss of life.
Mahalo Holden.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, yep.
Aloha.
Foundationability, support the bill, thank you for this opportunity.
Okay. Aloha. Uh, Eric Mead.
Uh, Mahalo Senator for introducing and hearing SB three, three, two, seven, which I strongly support. My name is Eric Mead. I'm a recent graduate of the William S. Richardson School of Law. In my recent written testimony, I have timestamped links to the September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three Water Commission meeting, where after being informed of HRS twenty-six dash thirty-five A four, which summarizes personal matters are to be determined by the board and then approved by the Chair. Um, and in some of those, I quote, this is not the commissioner's decision, this is not the commission's commi, commission's decision, this is mine. The commission, they do not share my decision, they do not support the decision. These com, commissioners, they are not in unison with the decision that I made, and I cannot think of a more, um, uh, a, a stronger argument than why, uh, this bill should be passed than, uh, what I just quoted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, IT, anyone on holding pattern on Zoom?
I think that's, uh.
Thank you very much. Anyone outside who wishes to speak to SB thirty-three, twenty-seven? Otherwise, the committee will, uh, return back to, uh, the good Senator, uh, from the Public Safety Division as well, the committee, and will proceed with the agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, we're going to go back to the top of the agenda. Senate Bill twenty-one, forty-one relating to electric, electric grid resiliency. First on our testifiers, this is Michael Vincent from DLE. Has submitted a testimony in support. Michelangelo, DCCA.
Aloha.
Aloha. Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs. Uh, my name is Michelangelo. I'm the Executive Director with the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, Vision of Consumer Advocacy. Uh, for those of you, I think most are familiar with our agents, our, our department or division, sorry. Uh, we protect the interests of all ratepayers of, uh, of, uh, regulated public utilities. Um, I, uh, we offer comments on this bill. I'd just like to take the time to bolster in addition to my, uh, comments that it's really important that we look at the resilience of electric utilities and also uh, all of our utilities within the islands because they're all vulnerable to natural threats and hazards, and we offer an amendment on this bill. Um, our role is really protecting interest ratepayers, which includes uh, considerations such as cost-effective and equitable delivery of utility services, um, that are resilient, uh, reliable and safe. Uh, and this would enable us to, uh, perform our statutory duty. Uh, so thank you for the time to testify, and I will build for any questions.
Great, thank you, Mark. Uh, Mark Lee, Energy Office.
Chairs, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, my name is John Chin from the Hawaii State Energy Office, and I'll be standing on our testimony with comments. Thank you.
Okay, Members, if you're gonna, um, audience, if you're gonna just stand on your testimony, you can do it from your chair. We really need to move this agenda along. Ken Aramaki, Hawaiian Electric.
Good afternoon.
Oh.
Uh, Ken Aramaki, I'm the Director of T, uh, Transmission, Distribution, and Interconnection Planning at Hawaiian Electric. Um, I stand on our, uh, written testimony and here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ken. Julie Yonker from Hawaii Gas.
Hi, good afternoon, Julie, from Hawaii Gas, we support this, and if the rest of Hawaii Gas can't do nothing.
Yep, got that in your testimony. Is there anyone, anyone else wishing to testify on SB twenty-one, forty-one? Members, questions? If not, we're going to move on to the next measure, that is Senate Bill twenty-one, forty-five relating to the fire code. First on our list is Don Chang, DLNR.
Chair, we stand on our original testimony.
Thank you, Chair. Kazuo Todd, State Fire Council, has submitted commentary.
They're unavailable on Zoom Chair.
Oh, yep, thank you. Uh, Bradford Ventura, State Fire Council, comments. Sheldon Howe, Hawaii Honolulu Fire Department, comments. Tamara Patler. In support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill twenty-one, forty-five? Members, any questions?
Um, no, but I don't think it's time to testify.
Yeah, only Don Chang.
Counting, is it something?
No, no, only Don Chang.
Okay, I don't know, I should, that's, it's not very clear.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next measure, that is Senate Bill twenty-three, thirty-one relating to historic preservation. Uh, we have Blake Wisher from the Governor's Office has submitted commentary. Don Chang from DLNR.
Thank you very much, Senator. We stand on our original testimony.
Thank you, Director. Keopu Relits from the Office of Hawaii Interfairs has suggested amendments.
We stand on our original testimony.
Justin Faulkner from Historic Hawaii Foundation has submitted testimony in support. Members, we have about six individuals. Um, four in support, two in opposition. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on Senate Bill thirty, excuse me, twenty-three, thirty-one? Members, any questions for Don Chang or? Okay, we're going to move on to the next measure, that is Senate Bill three, zero, six, four. Uh, this is for relating to funds. First on our testifiers list, we have Louis Solivera from Budget and Finance. Don Chang from DLNR.
Thank you very much, Senator. We support this measure and we stand on our original testimony.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
James Barrows from Haime has submitted testimony in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill three, zero, six, four? If not, Members, any questions? Moving right along, we're going to go to the next measure, that is Senate Bill twenty-one, forty-two relating to wildfire mitigation. We have, first, Don Chang from DLNR.
Thank you very much, Senator. We stand on our original testimony.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director. Allison Cato or Bryce Ye from the AG's Office.
Good afternoon, Chair Wakai, Chair Nui. I'm actually Christopher Leong, Deputy Attorney General, standing in for the Authors. Just very brief comment to place the Wildfire Mitigation Working Group within Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism to be administered by the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. You have the language in our written testimony. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. Mary Alice Evans from the Office of Planning has. Thank you. Bradford Ventura from the State Fire Council has submitted commentary. Sheldon Hao from the Honolulu Fire Department has comments. James Abraham from Hawaiian Electric.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is James Abraham. I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric, providing comments on Senate Bill 2142. We support this bill's collaborative approach to wildfire mitigation. As noted in our written testimony, we kindly asked the Committee to add a member to the proposed working group from the electric utility industry as we believe it would aid the working group in accomplishment of its goals. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thanks for joining us, James. Clay Scharnert, an individual, has submitted testimony. Oh, you're here.
Thank you, Chairs and Senators. Clay Scharnick, I've been at the University of Hawaii, but submitted testimony as an individual. Been working on wildfire management and science for about 12 years in the state, and I support this bill. I think I just had a couple of recommendations to include some legal perspective and policy perspective on the board as well as customary land use practices. There's going to be a wide-ranging use of land management that will be relevant for this, and just to ensure that there are some community voices on that advisory board as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Clay. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on 2142? Members, any questions? If not, I'm going to hand it over to my co.
Okay, thank you, Chair Wakai. With regards to SB 2842 relating to wildfire safety and prevention, we have DLNR.
Oh, we just did that one.
Oh, sorry. 2842?
We're in 2089.
Okay, you did 2842.
No.
Yes, so SB 2842 is what I.
Oh, my, my.
Oh, okay. On her tail.
All right.
My apologies.
Yes. We do oftentimes, because we're inundated with many numbers. Yes, bear with us, folks. SB 2842 relating to wildfire safety and prevention, DLNR. Aloha.
Chair, aloha. We stand on our original testimony.
Okay, mahalo. Office of State Planning and Sustainable Development. And you're not Mary Alice. Yes.
No.
Aloha, we appreciate your presence.
Thank you. David Kobayashi, Office of Planning, Sustainable Development. We would like to offer comments on this bill and actually note that the Chair's confusion was well warranted. There are some similarities with this and other legislation, and so we would like to see that resolved. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. PUC.
Chair, question, members of the Committee. My name is Grace Ral. I'm testifying on behalf of the Committee. We'll stand on our original testimony.
Okay, mahalo. And members, please, if there's any questions of those that we're calling, feel free to ask questions. Maui Fire Department sends communication in support. Sheldon Hao, Honolulu Fire Department, similar in support. Democratic Party of Hawaii, Chris Corfield, in support. Let's see. Clay, I think his name is Trunich. In, oh, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Yeah, Clay Scharnick, and it may be surprising, but I actually stand in opposition to this.
You are in opposition to what we read.
Yeah, because I think that the problem of fire risk response extends beyond DLNR's landscapes, so their jurisdiction. It also involves all of these other dimensions that are kind of outside of their expertise. And the bill we just discussed prior was probably a better fit for this problem. Thanks.
But you understand that within the DLNR, it's so far the forestry that handles more of the way, the work.
Yeah, I understand the roles, but I think that the, you know, it's going to take expertise beyond that single department to sort of address the problem.
Tamara Palton, in support. Okay, anyone on Zoom IT? Not hearing you?
No, not available. No one else on the.
All right, is there anyone here wishes to speak to SB 2842? Going once, going twice, we say aloha. We'll proceed with SB 2089, and this is relating to water. All right, DLNR.
Thank you very much, Chair Nui. Members of the Committee, Don Chang, Chair of the Board. We stand on our original testimony, providing some comments.
Okay, mahalo. Earth Justice. Aloha, Isaac. Mahalo for being with us today.
Thank you. Aloha again, Chairs, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. We submitted testimony in opposition, largely stand on a testimony available for questions, but in a nutshell, this bill, though well-intentioned, is too narrow and is really focusing on water banking for potential fire mitigation rather than fire safety itself to extent that we want to address emergencies and fire safety and whatnot. We believe that the previous bill that we heard, 3327, addresses that issue comprehensively and more. Thank you.
Mahalo. Hawaii Farm Bureau, in support. Okay, Mr. Clay, Trunich. Did I say that correctly?
Getting close.
Okay.
Scharnick.
Oh, Scharnick, okay.
Again, I, this is a complicated one, but I think that it's actually simple in the sense that I have nothing against water, making water available for fire suppression. The problem with this bill is that it prioritizes or shifts the priority in water use towards storage and emergency response and takes away the priority for actually responding and transforming the fuels, those flammable vegetation around the communities. And this is going to be really providing water, access to water, to be able to make those changes, things like farming, lo' ikalo, grazing, reforestation, stream restoration. All these are long-term things that need to be in place and should have been in place prior to an emergency response. This would have prevented the disaster we saw in Maui. And this not only reflects the vision of the communities that are going to be doing this work and want to do this work, but it also adheres to the best practices from science, wildfire science, nationally, internationally, who refer to this as fire-resilient landscapes, that being where we shift our attention to prevention versus, you know, short-term emergency response. And so the lesson from Maui should really be, we need to look at these longer-term solutions.
Mahalo. Thank you. I did call her earlier for previous bill, and I may also err in pronouncing her name. I see it as Sesame, but it could be Sesame Shim. Okay, in opposition. Kyle Kajihro, in opposition. Tamara Palton sends comments. James Faulkner, in support. It's either ISIS or ESIS, Osborn, in opposition. Holden Takahashi, I think you were on Zoom earlier. IT is Holden Takahashi there on Zoom?
No, no, he's not available.
Okay, thank you, in opposition. Malia Taylor-Wolff, in opposition. Jacqueline Ambles, in support. Is there anyone else wishes to speak to SB 2089? Okay, we'll move on then to SB. Yes, okay. Aloha. State your name for the record. This one, mahalo.
Aloha, my name is Kekai Kari. I'm from Lahaina. Two things. One, water banking, that we're calling it. It allows a developer who owns these reservoirs on their property to utilize this water while trying to maintain that minimum water within those reservoirs to further push their development. Two, at the local level, prior to the fire, the community, along with the Department of Water and Environmental Management, were already coming up with the plans to utilize R1 water in a way that would not make this bill necessary. And what it does is undermines what we've been doing all these years. And so this, we gotta allow us to operate at a local level first, and we'll come to you guys for support and in partnership. But give us opportunity. Our plan far exceeds what this plan does. This is short-term. What we're doing is long-term. We also started on the reforestation projects. We're working on R1 use and bringing in the dual meter systems into our homes. So please give us the opportunity to do this on a local level before the state has a hand in it. Okay, thank you.
Mahalo. Okay, anyone else wishes to speak to SB 2089? Aloha. Your name, please.
Aloha. Yes, Vailaki Okona. On behalf of Lahaina Strong, we are in opposition of this bill for similar reasons as Kekai mentioned. It undermines what we are already doing in Lahaina. Lahaina was once called the Venice of the Pacific and Kamalu Ulu Olele, Lahaina in the shade of the ulu trees. True fire mitigation is restoring Kamalu Ulu Olele. This creates a buffer zone that does not put us in a living tinderbox. And we are looking long-term, similar to like Kekai said, looking at R1 water and utilizing this to irrigate these fields to restore Kamalu Ulu Olele. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Okay, anyone else wishes to speak to SB 2089? Okay, we'll say aloha. Welcome to SB 2143, and this is relating to the Department of Land and Natural Resources, just as providing funds to the Wildlife Management Branch. Okay, DLNR. Okay, mahalo. Honolulu Fire Department. Sheldon Hao sends communication in support. Maui Fire Department. Bradford Ventura in support. Nature Conservancy in support. All right, Mr. Clay.
Strong support.
Okay, thank you. All right, aloha. Mahalo. Okay, that's it. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 2143? Okay, hearing none, then we will proceed with SB 2162 relating to the Conservation and Resource Enforcement Program. DLNR.
Thank you very much, Chair. Don Chang, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources, we stand on our original testimony.
Okay, mahalo. You're working hard today.
We know, indeed.
Okay, we're making you work. All right, okay. Olan Fisher. Okay, and representing Kuaina Ulu Au Amo in support. Eleanor Asaki in support. Uilani Ni'ipo in support. Is anyone else wishes to speak to SB 31, 2162? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed with SB 2593. This is regarding, relating to federal lands. DLNR.
Thank you very much, Chair. Don Chang, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources, we oppose this measure. We stand on our original testimony.
Okay, and this measure establishes within DLNR a Makua Valley Test Force. Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Mahalo. Center for Hawaiian Sovereignty Studies. Dr. Kenneth Confin in opposition. Earth Justice. Okay, in support. Hawaii Military Affairs Council sends in comments. In support, Kyle Kajihro, Lorna Strand, Regina Gregory, Sam Peck, Karen Young, Zeb Jones, and Nancy Jones, all in support. Is there anyone else wishes to speak to SB 2593? It, I did have Kyle Kajihro wanting to be on Zoom. Is he present?
No, he's unavailable.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here wishes to speak to SB 2593? Okay, very short.
Very short.
Okay.
Just, I'd like to.
On your name again.
My name is Clay Scharnick. I work at the University of Hawaii, but I submitted testimony as an individual. I would just like to bring awareness to the fact that this, the management of Makua currently, and the agreement with the Department of Defense currently funds a program to do conservation across Oahu. This is the Army Natural Resource Program. And in the event that this tenure would change to raise awareness to the government that making those funds available, this is the largest conservation program in the state of Hawaii and would be really a critical resource to continue to support and continue that level of investment in land management and endangered species protection. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. Chair Chang, have we, do you have an update on did the military transfer the lands to the state?
No, so we are currently in the process of doing the lease negotiations. So they are preparing all of their environmental documents for the various USDOD branches for those leases that expire in 2029. So that's all we're saying is, rather than having this, this group work, that there's an existing process, and we would ask that that process continue more.
Okay, that's why you're opposition.
Yes.
Sure, understand. All right, thank you. Mahalo, appreciate that. Okay, moving on. SB 3155 relating to public land liability. And this abolishes the Test Force on Beach and Water Safety and the Risk Assessment Working Group, DLNR. And I know Kurt is here. Okay, DLNR.
What's your line?
You know, I'm just going to hash in.
Well.
This is. I thought you guys wanted to get out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, all right. Yes, you must speak into the microphone, please. Okay.
Kurt Kottrell, Administrator for the Division of State Parks. You have our testimony. This is a housekeeping measure. Senator Fukunaga, you probably remember when we passed Act 190. It was a result of a lot of beach spinal cord injuries. Working with the plaintiff attorneys, we came up with Act 190, which is why you see all the beach warning signs that are in place now. After Sacred Falls, we established the Risk Assessment Working.
That was in the early 2000s.
It was.
I was here as well.
Yes.
Where the oldies.
I wasn't going to say that, but that's okay. And the Risk Assessment Working Group was patterned after the Task Force on Beach and Water Safety. The point I want to make is, we've been doing this for decades. We're pretty much maintaining the existing signage. One of the big differences, though, is we need to be nimble because of social media. And rather than try to assemble these groups, and what we used to do is go out and look, and everybody go, yep, the sign should go there, then it goes to the board, then the Chair approves it. We need to be more nimble. And so the bill is structured so that the mayor of the respective counties would approve any new signage. The Chair of the Department for DLNR Lands, for Parks, and on Nala Hali would approve the signage.
Sounds good to me. Okay, we'll move on. Yes, let's see. Jessamy Town Horner, an individual, in opposition. Okay, Sarah Fairchild sends comments. Bill Hicks in support. That's it, Chair. Is there anyone else wishes to speak to SB 3155? Okay, going one, members, any questions to anyone?
I have questions going back to 3327.
Senator Alafonte and 3127 is with relation to?
Oh, 3327, relating to the Commission on Water Resources. One question for BWS and one question for DLNR. This is the first measure we took out of order. Yeah.
SB 3327.
Thank you, Manager Lau. I did have a chance to, I know you submitted testimony late, but if if the legislature were to address the points that you made in terms of the concerns that you had in your testimony, would BWS be in support?
I think we can live with this bill. And I, in my written testimony, I didn't comment about the the structure of the commission, but I concur with the bill's recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then Chair, if I may, one follow-up for Board Chair Chang. So in DLNR's. So in BLNR's, sorry, in Board of Water Supplies testimony, and they've brought this up from last session, about a water, water shortage plan, Seaworm coming up with that, could you provide us an update as to where Seaworm is with their water shortage plan?
Sure, I'm gonna ask myself.
So per water management, per commission statutes, whenever an area is designated and water use permits are issued, the applicants are supposed to come up with the water shortage plans. At this point, we've only come close to preparing a proharbor water shortage plan for the state.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to ask questions.
Yeah, I have a question for you. Sorry, Chair, but yeah, Chair Chang, okay, there are several on the sections. I know you have comments and opposition, and let's see. So just to get this correct, on section two, okay, you're in opposition, if I remember, as well, and section, section three with regards to, let's see, Attorney General, the AG. Okay, and then section four, Executive Director, you're supporting that amendment, and then section two as well, you have, I think you have comments on that one yet, too.
Section two, yes, we oppose.
Section five.
Section five, yes, section five.
In opposition. And then six, section six as well, and then part of it, and then section seven, you support. Okay, and then eight, and yeah, and the rest is clear. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Mahalo. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Chair, I just wanted clarification.
Senator Favella.
I understand how you feel, but do you think this bill would help better protect our water?
You know, Senator Favella, I think, I think that Seaworm is doing, we're doing the best job we can. I think we are protecting the water. I think since 1987, since the establishment of the water code, there have been numerous cases that have, that have clarified the public trust principles. I believe Seaworm is actually, we are implementing and including those principles as a priority. We do Kappa Aki analysis. We have, we have designated water management areas. I do support, I mean, contrary to many people's opinions, I mean, I see the wisdom and the value in this Executive Director, that the Deputy on Water, Deputy on Water Resource Management be an Executive Director, establish continuity and more institutional, so I, I'm not objecting to that. I just want to make sure that we are, we are making changes in response to making this better, not in response to people's perception of what happened in Lahaina. That's my only concern. I want us to be very thoughtful and mindful of this.
I'm glad you brought that up. Sorry, Chair, just one more follow-up on that. The reason why, so I left Maui, I worked in Maui, high regions in Maui. I left Maui in about 2000, 2001. All those houses, I'm not saying DLNR gave the permission, but we need to investigate. Who gave them permission to divert the water that was for everybody that made on, made their own reservoirs and then became private water? Because the water way on top that they diverted was not private water, but now they own 90% of the water. So how can we go in being proactive that this kinds of stuff never happened? And I'd be happy to work with you and go over, and go over the logistics of what had happened since I left there, but how can we prevent this from any of the neighbor islands going through something like this? Because we know it's the county, yeah? But when the county issue these kinds of stuff, where is the oversight on DLNR? So that's something that we need to figure out, because all day, going back and forth to different hearings, they're giving a lot, a lot of trust in the county, and that's the part that I have. So you think we can work together?
I am, I am very optimistic about that, Senator.
Thank you, Chair, because I don't trust the county. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Senator. All right.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Chair, you're.
Yeah, we take a brief break before taking the vote.
We're reconvening the Joint Committees on Public Safety, Intergovernmental and Military Affairs, and I'm good friends from the Committee on Water and Land for our three o'clock agenda. Now for decision-making on Senate Bill 2141 relating to electric grid resiliency. The two chairs have conferred and would like to make the following amendments. We are going to take DLE suggested amendment to change the Director of Homeland Security on page three, line 19, to Director of Law Enforcement. There are a number of entities that wanted to get onto this council. We're gonna bring all of them into the party. That includes Executive Director of the Division of Consumer Advocacy, they're represented from the Hawaii State Energy Office, and someone from Hawaii Gas. We're also gonna take HECO suggested amendments from their testimony. They thought that part of it was a little bit inflammatory because this part of it accuses them of starting the fire. We don't want to put that in the language of this bill, so we're gonna delete language on page two, lines five through eight, and we're gonna make the effective date January 1st, 2042. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Alafonte, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2141 with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Wa.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you for the Committee on Water and Land, same recommendation to pass SB 2141 with amendments. Members, any questions, any concerns? Hearing none. Vice Chair for the vote with amendments on SB 2141. Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2141 with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator McKelvie. Senator Favella.
Aye.
Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
On Senate Bill 2145 relating to fire code, we'd like to just pass this measure out with a defective date of January 1st, 2042. That's the only amendment to this measure. Members, any discussion?
Why are we giving appropriation?
There's an appropriation in this measure. Do I take that out?
Yeah.
Actually, I think Webb doesn't want us to put in appropriations.
Yes, I'm saying.
Thank you for that, that guidance. So, members, there's an appropriation in this bill, but as is common practice this session, we're gonna take that appropriation language out. So, again, two amendments, one defective date, and taking out the appropriations. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Alafonte, I vote yes.
Okay, of the five members present on PSM, Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2145 with amendments, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Committee on Water and Land, same recommendation on to SB 2145 with amendments. Any discussions? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2145 with amendments of the five members present on water, land, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
We're going to move on to Senate Bill 2331 relating to historic preservation. We heard all the testimony and support and some commentary, but would like to pass this measure out as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator Alafonte, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2331 as is of the five members present on PSM, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Same recommendation on SB 2331 is to pass as is. Any discussions for Committee on Water and Land? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2331 as is of the five members present on water, land, any no votes or votes with reservations.
No vote.
No vote for Senator Favella. Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
For Senate Bill 3064 relating to funds, this is going to give the governor some flexibility in times of natural disasters, so I'd like to pass this measure out as is. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Alafonte, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 3064 as is, any of the five members present on PSM, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Committee on Water and Land on SB 3064, same recommendation to pass as is. Any discussions, members? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 3064 from the Committee on Water and Land as is, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
On the next measure, Senate Bill 2142 relating to wildfire mitigation, members like to defer this bill. There's probably a better vehicle being Senate Bill 2842, so we will defer action on this measure.
Okay, Water and Land agrees. Okay, shall we proceed then? Okay, for SB 2842 relating to wildfire safety prevention, Chair's recommendation is we pass with amendments. We'd like to adopt DLNR amendments and merging SB 2142 with 28, SB 2842, and, let's see, we'll be defecting the date to July 1st, 2050. Any discussions, members, on the Committee on Water and Land? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote on SB 2842 is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2842 with amendments of the five members present, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
For PSM, same recommendation on Senate Bill 2842 to pass with the stated amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Alafonte, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2842 with amendments of the five members present on PSM, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
For SB 2809 relating to water, Chair's recommended that we defer this indefinitely. You agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't let it flow anywhere else.
All right, okay. SB 2143, and this is, let's see, relating to DLNR, Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Any discussions? Okay, hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote for the Committee on Water and Land, SB 2143 as is. Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2143 as is of the five members present, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
For PSM, same recommendation to pass this measure out as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator Alafonte, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2143 as is of the five members present on PSM, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you for SB 2162. This one has an appropriation.
Should we take it off?
Yeah, this one here, this one here has an appropriation.
It's saying that we should not.
Yeah, so we're taking that out. Okay, all right. Okay, for SB 2162 relating to the Conservation Resources Enforcement Program, Chair's recommendation is that we pass with the amendments. We'll be taking out the appropriation and we'll defect the date to July 1st, 2050. Any discussion? Committee on Water and Land, SB 2162. Senator McKelvie.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate you moving forward. However, I'm gonna go with reservation, because the whole point of this group was to ensure that signage that was put up by the DLNR would create a mechanism of warning to reduce liability to the state, and having just the director do it could open the door towards improper signage, which could increase liability to the state. So I'm just gonna go WR for now.
This is the don't care one?
This is the signage one, right?
No. It's accreditation.
Oh, well then, never mind.
Okay.
Good.
All right.
I'll save my comments.
Okay, for the vote, Water and Land, SB 2162 is to pass with amendments.
Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2162 with amendments of the five members present on water, land, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
For PSM, same recommendation to pass with amendments that were stated. Any discussion? If not, Senator Alafonte, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 2162 with amendments of the five members present on PSM, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
SB 2593 relating to federal lands in Makua Valley, Chair's recommendations is to defer this measure indefinitely. SB 3155 relating to public land liability, Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Any discussions?
No.
Okay, Vice Chair for the vote for SB 3155 as is.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass SB 3155 as is of the five members present on water, land, any no votes, any votes with reservations. Knowing the reservations to Senator McKelvie, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
For PSM members, same recommendation to pass this measure out as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator Alafonte, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 3155 as is of the five members present on PSM, any no votes, any votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. SB 3327, Seaworm's measure, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. The Chair's recommended as well that we'll just take out, we'll delete the appropriation for the outside council, but just to let you know that during any time as needed, that they have the opportunity to hire their own council and was added, is being added to the HRS as well. We'll defect the date to July 1st, 2050, and we'll also take the amendments recommended by the BWS. Any discussion? Hearing none, Vice Chair for the vote for the Committee on Water and Land, Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 3327 with amendments of the five members present on water, land, any no votes, any votes with reservations. Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Mahalo.
For PSM, same recommendation to pass this measure with the stated amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Alafonte, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 3327 with amendments of the five members present on PSM, any no votes, any votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you, everyone.
You did well in your committee.